I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Ham, here, Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Counsel, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the twenty, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four council meeting. Approval of the June seventh, twenty twenty four payroll in the amount of two hundred and two thousand eight hundred and thirty seven dollars and sixty cents. Approval of general obligation debt in the amount of one million, one hundred and ninety eight thousand, seven hundred and seven. This is the principal and interest that is payable here in June from our three GO bonds. Resolution authorizing funds transfers, resolution of employment in the park and rec department. Acceptance of the water and sewer utility committee minutes from March twentieth and May twenty fourth of twenty twenty four. Approval of liquor license for Cafe Paradiso. BPOE Elks Lodge number eleven ninety-two in Fairfield Rag Bride. Approval of ACH payment to the Department of Revenue in the amount of twelve thousand, five sixty-eight, twenty-three. And approval of total claims in the amount of four hundred and sixty-eight, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. We had one claim more than seventy-five thousand to Morris Enterprise, Inc. For eighty-one thousand, seven seventeen and fourteen cents for the ninth and Jefferson Water Main project.
I will approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any discussion?
I did review the claims and they seemed fine.
Great. And their questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you. We have two public appearances. Gloria Countryman is up first with the Carnegie Museum Foundation report.
Good evening. As Mayor Boyer said, I am here representing the Carnegie Museum Foundation of Jefferson County, Iowa. It's not my first rodeo, so I feel like I know most of you here. Our mission statement consists of four components, and I'm going to incorporate those missions, uh, components of that mission statement in what I present to you tonight. The first part of our mission statement says assisting the city of Fairfield, Iowa in preserving and maintaining the Carnegie Historical Museum building. And just as a reminder, some of you are new and may not know this. The building was built in eighteen ninety-two as the very first of Andrew Carnegie's endowment libraries. And our building was the prototype of the rest of his one thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight libraries. That in itself is quite a feat, and it makes our building the museum's most important artifact. I haven't been here for a while, so since my last report to the council, there's been a lot happening. In fact, there's been a lot happened since two thousand and eighteen. That's when we started the work that we're working on for the last few years. That was the year we put together the engineering report from Klinger Engineering, and from that report, we have done several things. The southwest corner has been stabilized. It's no longer tilting. The building has been tuck pointed. It has been cleaned or in the process of finishing anyway. New bricks were installed to replace the bricks that were deteriorating, and the parapets have been repaired. Have you been by the building to notice how much it almost looks brand new? And to think about the tuck pointing that was on that building lasted over a hundred and thirty years. So let's hope what we've done now continues like that one did. The new energy efficient windows are almost completely installed. These projects were preceded in previous years since two thousand and nineteen of a new railing going up to the front door, new front steps and a walkway, and a new up to code elevator. Funds for these projects were provided through the city of Fairfield's lost funds, private donations, Midwest One Bank, Traffic's Devices, the Greater Jefferson County Foundation, the Lee Gobble Remainer Trust, and the Carnegie Museum Foundation. We have worked closely with Melanie Carlson, the Fairfield City Engineer, Rebecca Loper, the City Clerk, Autobomb Company who has done all of the construction and reconstruction on the building and the tuck pointing and everything, Klinger Engineering, Kelly Glass Company, both Autobomb and Kelly Glass are out of Illinois. Kelly Glass is the company we contracted with to do the windows, and they are magnificent. It changes the look of the entire building. We are also working with Midwest Millworks, who's doing the interior work around the windows that needs to be done. We tried to salvage as much as we could of the wood that was around the windows, and what couldn't be, he's rehabilitating for us. Shaw's Voorhees Construction, Schumacher Elevatory, Elev- not Elevatory, geez, Schumacher Elevator Company. They, all of these people have helped us develop and complete these restoration projects for the Carnegie Museum. Mission component number two is maintaining a five oh one C three nonprofit status to provide a tax deduction for those who choose to donate to the museum, and we also have in Dow, Iowa, tax options. The third component, we can also act as a fiscal agent for grants for individuals or groups who sponsor local historical projects related to the mission of the foundation. Examples that have been done in the past. We were the fiscal agent for Greater Jefferson County Fair in regards to the schoolhouse on the fairgrounds, and an individual in the county who has restored two prairie cemeteries in the county. The fourth component is writing grants and planning fundraisers to support the Carnegie Historical Museum. And as we proceed to whatever the next large project is going to be, we will be looking to find grants to fit the needs of the museum. And again, we will be working with Klinger Engineering in creating the specs and estimates of costs for that next project, as I say, whatever it ends to be. We've got several possibilities. We just have not decided what it will be. And believe me, we will keep you informed because the lost funds have been a great addition to the funds that we've needed to do the projects we've done. Both boards are thrilled that our museum has become a destination for people across the state as well as for people across the country. So far, well, let's talk about last year. Last year, we had three thousand people go through the door. So far this year, to this point today, we've had three thousand visitors already. And there are more to come. Class reunions come in. We've had a couple of bus tours come in from Des Moines. They were amazed, and the next, first thing they've heard, Dave Neff heard them say as they came out, oh, where are we gonna eat? Because they had the list of all the places in town where they could choose to go eat. So all of these visitors in turn leads to people looking at other things of interest in our community, not only in Fairfield, but in the surrounding communities around that have a lot of history. That goes with the Fairfield community. They are enjoying the shopping and the variety of food choices, and if they don't have time to stay, if they're on a bus tour, guess what? They say, we're coming back. So we are becoming not only a destination site, but we're hopefully becoming an important part of the economic improvements as to people visiting that are coming because they're here. Now, I ask this every time I come. I'm gonna ask it again because we ask the new people. I don't know what your answer is. How many of you have not just walked in the door of the museum and said, oh, this is nice and walked out? No. How many of you have walked in the museum and had Jake give you a tour?
How could you not get a tour from Jake?
Well, I was gonna say, if you got out the door without Jake talking you into staying at least an hour, you missed out. He was not doing his job. You're right. Well, I'm glad because there's something new all the time. What's interesting is that whether you were born and raised in Fairfield like I was, or whether you're a transplant, I guarantee you'll learn something new every time you walk through that door because Jake and Charlotte are always finding out something new. And there are things that I had no clue about, and I've been here all but seven years of my life. So it's a fascinating place. It's a booming place. There's always something going on. Now, the last thing I want to say is that the Carnegie Museum Foundation has been very appreciative of your trust. Because the city of Fairfield has shown us that you trusted us to do the projects that have been done and have made our building much, much better than it was. We could not have done it without your support. We've tried to keep you informed. I hope we've done a good job with that. I hope we've returned the information that you needed to have. But thank you again for your trust because I hate to tell you how many contracts I've signed that made me nervous because they were big, six to seven-figure contracts. And I'm not used to that. I'm used to the three-figure contracts. So thank you again for everything you've done to support the museum. Continue to come because you'll see something different the next time you go. I guarantee it. If not, Jake will dig up something to find, give for you too. Any questions?
Well, we thank you, Gloria, for all your hard work, and you've been at this a few years on the board and-
I wasn't gonna tell you. This is my last presentation.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think it's time for somebody else to step up and be the president. It's time. I was told when I took the job that I was here till I died. I have not died yet, but I would like to have a little more time on my hands, so. But I have learned so much, not just about the museum, but about construction and all the engineering things that have gone on. I've learned a lot of things, and I found out I knew more than I thought I did too. So that's good, but as, as I say, this has been a privilege, and I've thoroughly enjoyed it. I've learned a lot.
Well, thank you for your passion and all your hard work. Thank you. Thank you. And please give our thanks to all the board too. Samantha Lang, Greater Jefferson County Fair.
Hi. Hello again. I'm Samantha Lang with the Greater Jefferson County Fair. I am here representing the fair parade that we do annually. Typically, it's a kick, well, it is a kickoff parade to the county fair. Typically, we did it on, historically, we have had the parade on a Tuesday evening. This year, we've chose to move it to a Monday evening. Our schedule, it's a blessing, but it's filling up, and it's been really hard to get everything scheduled in and get kids to participate when they have so many activities still on Tuesday. So I am here seeking approval for the fair parade to be on Monday, June twenty-fourth at a seven PM kickoff time. We line up at the Fairfield High School. I've worked with Jeff Courtwright and Josh Wiley on that. So the parking lot is there for us to use. The map and the route are listed there. Same as every other year, except for last year, it was kind of wonky. And then we end back at the high school. I've also spoke with Bart Richmond, and he's got people staffed to be able to help assist with walking off streets and guiding the public.
Got any questions? Any questions, counsel?
I'm assuming most people are gonna be home watching counsel on YouTube.
You're probably right, but in the off chance that somebody is there for candy.
If someone can make a motion to approve this-
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We've been seconded to approve the route. Again, it starts at the high school, west on East Broadway, goes to North Main, one block, and then back east on Briggs to finish up at the high school.
Correct.
So. No other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Good luck?
Thank you.
We hope it's a, a lot of people there.
We do too. Thank you very much.
And you have a good fair season.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to resolution action items and ordinances. The first action item is consideration of a seatbelt amendment to the personnel policy. It's pretty self-explanatory there.
I make a motion that we move the amendment to the employee handbook.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Flornoy, second by Toohill to add this additional language to the employee handbook. And basically, just for the public, it's, if you haven't read it, it's adding that employees must wear their seat belts and shoulder harnesses and in their, while they're riding in, uh, equipment. And that they should not be in the back of pickups and truck boxes and fenders, all the places that you normally would ride, and not to be elsewhere, so. Any other questions? Not pleased, call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That passed unanimously. Next action item is a consideration of playground expansion at Lambs and Woods. Looks like Melanie's here to tell us all about.
Yes. So Dowd International, the organization that funded the playground equipment that was installed last year at Lambs and Woods, would like to start on a phase two. The, the group that, the members that were involved in that are busy with young families, and so I offered to speak to you, Grace, tonight about their, their phase two. They have some funds left over from the first round, and they plan to give additional funds for, for the next phase. Their next phase will require some design prior to construction, and they would like to get some blessing or an initial blessing before they spend that money. It has to do with grading and getting the placing, making sure that the equipment stays out of the restricted area, and getting it to all fit in the remaining area. They, they kind of took the easy spot with phase one, so phase two is gonna take a little bit more effort. With fees two, the plan to, or they will after, as part of their design, they'll make sure to get the park and rec staff approval with whatever equipment they pick. They have already solicited input from the public, gone to a couple of different Facebook mom groups asking for input on equipment. They want to be more ADA conscious of the equipment. They're looking at, oh, I can't think of the right term, but a seat that will accommodate more users on their piece of equipment. And then they, they are aware that there are restricted areas at Lambs and Woods due to the historic nature and being the forest reserve, and they're aware that they have to stay out of all of that, hence that they're going to spend some money on design. But they would like, I guess, an initial okay to move forward with some of that work before they, before they go any further. And then one of the pieces, I will say, Jason, that link is one of the pieces of equipment that they're, that they're looking at is a cableway, glider zip line. It's not zip line like swinging through the trees zip line. It's about, yeah, it's just a little bit off the ground. But with the double one, this is where they would, if this piece of equipment fits on the site, then they would hope to get a seat. So those have a swing base, but they would like to get an ADA compliance seat on that so a kid can be, can sit in it and be strapped in.
So the plan is to have more than just this piece, then you're saying?
Correct. I, they were looking at, I believe, a slide and some balance things. They were looking at several pieces, and so as part of the design, they wanted to see how that all fits in with the topography and getting staff approval on those.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the expansion of playground equipment at Lambs and Woods, subject to park and rec director's approval.
Good.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to move forward on this, subject to park and rec approval and the design work, so. Any other questions? Not pleased, call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. Next resolution, it's consideration declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation one point one five dash two to issue debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects, which happens to be the fire station. And as you know, we've already, we do have some things that we've already paid for out of pocket. So anything else you want to say about this, Rebecca?
No, we have done this previously, but after three years, it wears off, so we're doing it again.
Great. So, and review for, I guess, public is our total estimated cost of this, right now is eight point three million. Amount of borrowing anticipated is five million. And our estimated date of completion is July twenty twenty-seven on this document, so.
So I make a motion to issue debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures paid in connection with the specified project.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Okay, the next two resolutions, I'll just preface with, um, city administrator, city clerk, city engineer, myself, and our street department, Joe Hurd, all sat in for this training regarding, um, Title VI nondiscrimination and policy statements. So these are the next two things. Basically, it has to do with federal highway dollars, could be transfer property as well, but it's just specifically talking about, you know, what we must follow. So just some of the highlights, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Under the general assurances on the first document, I'm just gonna read this again for the public's benefit. No person in the United States shall, on the grounds of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be otherwise subjected to discrimination under any program or activity for which the recipient receives federal financial assistance from DOT, including federal highway administration dollars. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. So again, the first is, you know, what we should be doing, and the second is our, and the second one is our policy statement. And it has a lot of different acts. There are some executive orders that we're to follow and amendments. So again, let's just go with these one at a time. So the first one is consideration of standard Title VI nondiscrimination assurances.
Move to approve resolution.
Second.
Okay, moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any discussion?
I just had a question about these two. They're not new, right?
No.
No.
But why are we appro, do we have approval on a regular basis, or is this the first time I remember seeing this?
Yeah.
Every five years.
Yeah, we have to do it every three years. That's what they told us, and I don't know if it was in fact done five years ago.
It was not. They will come in and do an audit to make sure that all of our policies are updated and in place.
So I did have Doug add it to our kind of maturity spreadsheet, so we kind of keep it in, on that list that in five years, we gotta redo this. And it also, um, I think on the second one, by the way, it notes that Doug is our coordinator. And so anytime the coordinator changes, for some reason, we all should be, we should be updating it at that time too, so.
He'll be the one signing this document?
Yeah, I'll sign.
Well, the mayor will sign it, and then-
Yeah, I'll sign the policy statement.
He'll be listed as a contact.
Yeah. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second on the floor, and no questions on the first one? Okay, so please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And then consideration of Title VI nondiscrimination policy statement. Again, this names Doug as the Title VI coordinator.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Caness, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Caness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. That was approved unanimously. Next is a resolution for body camera policy.
I've moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved by Caness, second by Gandy. We did talk about this last week. Our city attorney brought it up, that he was gonna be bringing this to us, and so this is for staff who will be wearing a body camera. So any other discussion?
Does this apply to non-law enforcement? People only?
Right, we already have policies for law enforcement, and they all use-
This hasn't overrid any of that, though.
Right.
Any other questions? Not pleased, call the roll. Caness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was passed unanimously. Ordinance, next ordinance, this is a first reading, consideration of mending municipal code fourteen point oh four, point one seven oh, water meters. This is the new water meters that we're installing, and I'll open a public hearing to see if anybody wants to talk about this. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And anything additional that anybody wants to say about these meters? Not? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Moved by Toohill?
Second.
Second by Ham. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next ordinance, consideration of amendment providing for adoption of parking violations. We are increasing our parking tickets from ten dollars to fifty. You will see there is some language that must be not needed anymore. And so I will open a public hearing. This is the first reading for this ordinance. Anybody want to speak to this? Seeing, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Melanie, do you want to say anything about this particular?
Do you want me to?
Sure. Go ahead and hit the highlights for the public. A little bit more than what I did.
Okay, so this comes from the discussion of Najah's Building and the improvements to the Armory or the Blue-
Blue Rose.
Blue Rose Ballroom. And just the general improvements that are in the downtown of how do we accommodate the parking and not have people laugh when they pay the parking tickets of ten dollars without going back to metered parking? And so the only, I will say, the only thing that is really at the council's discretion on this is the initial fifty dollars. The hundred dollars for abusing the disability parking space, the increasing for five day, five dollars after thirty days. Those are set by state code, which is why those two things were changed, and the state code then is referenced. And the strikeouts are things that were, they were taken out, again, because we no longer have the meter system. And just really clarifying some things with the way the police actually do things now versus the way they did it in two thousand and eleven when this section of code was written and updating it with state code. So again, the only thing really, I guess, for discussion is that, is that initial payment.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Downtown around the square, do we still take it? Do you park there for over two hours?
Chief?
He said we do if we get a complaint.
And I, so that was off, that came up as part of our snowpocalypse post-action summary was that we found out we do not, that is not clarified in our downtown, and we do need to fix the signage on that. The hi, I've had, Joan and I have had plenty of other things on our plate, and we haven't figured out exactly what that signage needs to be in order to clarify it. But by code, it is still law that it is two hours during business hours of nine to five, I think, is what we found out. And that the overnight parking, the snow ordinance, the Thursday night sweeping, does not get rid of that two hour. I think how it was relayed to the street department at the time and how, how it was all relayed, I think the two-hour signs got removed and the snow ordinance got put up, and so the two-hour just didn't get clarified at the time. So we do hope to fix that before summer's up.
Okay.
And before they really start taking off. I mean, they're not gonna take it for the two hours before we get the signs up.
Sure. I guess I just have an experience I want to share. When I was county treasurer, people thought they came in and paid tickets to us all the time. And they were ladies that came to lunch and shop on the square, and they got a ticket because they were parked in one spot for more than two hours. And they're like, we're never coming back here again. So I guess I would encourage, you know, maybe we need to go to some sort of, if you work on this- if you work on the square, you need, like, to have something on your car, so that we know that you're an employee that shouldn't be parking there, so that we can accommodate those people that are from out of town that want to come visit our community, so we ensure we're not ticketing those people.
I am kind of surprised, we, um, twenty years ago, we used to get complaints all the time about the two hour parking, because of the type of businesses down there. Well, now businesses are more, instead of clothing shops, um, are more restaurants, and they want them to stay hours and hours and, and just walk the squares. We hardly get that complaint-
Okay.
-anymore, and when we do get that complaint, we have to testify in court it's been there two hours, so we go up, mark the tire, and then come back two hours, so that vehicle probably sat there for at least four hours.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if it was in that area.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, it's just, it's not prior, priority to the businesses or the citizens anymore, so we hardly ever get a call about it.
Do we use judgment, like, if it's an out-of-state plate, um, you know, that we assume that they're in visiting and, and-
We try to be very consistent with everybody.
Sure.
Especially being a college town that has a lot of-
Yep.
Uh, students that have out-of-state places or legal, because they're students here, and so they can keep mom and dad's address, uh, so we see a lot more. Um, so, I don't know, we probably, but, like I said, we only respond to those if we get complaints, so it's aggravated somebody to the point they've called the police department.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Not, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Toohill, any further questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Great, uh, that was approved unanimously, and we'll move to the second reading. Ordinance twelve forty-seven, this is the second reading. This is a rezoning of Walton Park subdivision, this is on Walton Road, it's north, north of Walton Road, and basically what we are doing is changing it from an R one to an R three before development happens.
Is this one that we could skip the third reading and move to adopt it?
You can always do that.
If we so choose to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would motion to do just that.
Okay, so she wants to, let's go for suspending the rules first.
Yes.
Is there a second to suspend the rules?
Uh, I had just one question before, I'll take a second.
Yeah.
So, there's no development on that, uh, property as of now?
There is development.
There is.
Is that why you want to move it?
What was it, spend? That we're, we're changing-
It's already built.
Homes that are single-family homes to R three homes?
They're already multi-family homes, so.
They, they exist, that's why, is that why you move it?
Correct, that's why I'm moving to-
Unlawfully?
I think they started building before they annexed, when it was county property. So, they didn't break any rules.
Well, I guess what I'm worried about is people taking a single-family home, getting it rezoned to R three, turning it into apartments.
Yeah, this is definitely not that instance. I, I totally get what you're saying.
This is new construction. It was probably zoned incorrectly to begin with, if there was already R three on the property before we annexed it.
Automatic.
County doesn't have zoning ordinance.
I thought that-
No, but we, we zoned it when we annexed it, so we should not have zoned it R one.
I, any-
Doesn't it automatically come in as R one?
Yes, anytime you annex it, it comes in as R one.
And then we have to change it to R three.
Did we do that?
Yeah.
That's what we're doing now, I guess.
Yes.
Twenty years later.
No.
This is newly annexed land.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so it was county, was already built on, we annexed, it came in as R one, now we're changing it to R three.
And, and go into the third reading, because it's already built, the property is built.
So, we need a, we've got a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy, any questions? Call the roll. Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll take the motion to move it to the third reading.
So, moved.
Uh, moved by Kness?
Second.
Second by Ham, further questions?
Just to be clear, there are both R one and R three buildings on that property, or is it just R three?
On that specific property?
One that we're addressing here.
Just R three.
Okay.
Yes, uh, two years ago, the site that we are annexing was vacant, it was farmland ground. A year ago, when it was still in county, um, they built a triplex on it.
Okay.
Then, six months ago, we annexed it, and it came in as R one. There's only one triplex on the area that we are annexing, and maybe, like, a shed, but I don't even know for sure if there's a shed on it.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any other questions? Not, please call the roll. Kness?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you, that was unanimous, we passed it. Move to the third and final reading. Okay, under the mayor's report, uh, just a couple things. Um, some of you may have gotten a postcard reminding you of the League of Cities Conference, which is in Sioux City this year, uh, September eighteenth through the twentieth. Um, I meant to ask you, who, do you want, whoever wants to go, do you want them to connect with you, Doug?
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe we can get all their reservations at the same place.
Well, the reason I asked, yeah, the housing, uh, opened today, in fact, for the conference.
Yes.
And registration was open last week, so.
Yes.
When I got the magazine, I thought we should go ahead and pull the trigger on that.
Yeah, so, if you wanna go, um, please let Doug know, uh, maybe within the next week. Would that be soon enough? So, okay, great. Um, Doug and I had, 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 in our talks, one of the things that we talked about, and we, and we've talked about this before, is putting together an IT committee. So, um, what Doug and I talked about is, he's gonna talk to his department heads, he would like to get three personnel. Um, and I know Matthew was interested in being part of that, and, uh, so, and Doug, and, you know, I'll participate when I can, but just do it in-house, that what they'll do is look at our current contract, look at the scope of services, maybe you look at some other vendors, and then bring that to council, and, you know, just, just do an update of making sure that we're keeping up to date, and our prices are in check, et cetera. So, um, it's kind of an FYI, Doug's gonna kinda take the lead and make that happen. And, uh, you know, if anybody's got any words of wisdom for Doug to let him know, you know, on that, or, so.
Might we ask Katie Anderson's husband to participate? Or someone who has that kind of expertise?
We could. He worked on it a little bit last year, and Katie did too, but it never, I don't know what happened, but it got stalled for various reasons, and, uh, on their end, and so, um, and I know we had conversations with another vendor, uh, but, uh, yeah, we can.
I think, I think Katie indicated interest that her husband would be interested, something like this.
Yeah, so we can, we can check with him.
Back, back down to you. But, learned a lot today, but.
Yeah.
Maybe we're gonna ask-
Eric is his name, maybe, yeah, Eric Anderson.
Yeah, well, we can see if he has time, so, okay, sounds good. Um, and this is, you know, I think this kinda comes around probably once or twice a year, especially now that it's springtime or almost summertime, a lot more bicycles on the street. I did have a complaint about bicycles not following the road rules, so just a friendly little mother reminder to follow the road rules, and no, no bicycles on the sidewalks downtown, and, I mean, and I personally do see a lot of people riding their bikes on the wrong side of the road, and not stopping at stop signs, and, and that's the way people get hurt, particularly on the bikes, 'cause they can't really, um, muster up enough to, um, be bigger than a car, so, it really is, really, yes.
Sorry, I don't wanna interrupt, but I would like to add brighter clothing, or at least some white, especially if they're biking at night out to Walmart. There's many do not have a light on the back of their bike, and they're wearing dark clothing, and you just don't see them at all till you're just right on top of them, so.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. Yep, so, just friendly reminder out there to, uh, uh, step it up a little bit, so everybody stays safe. Um, city attorney reports.
Yeah, I'll, uh, pick up on something I mentioned at the last meeting, but, uh, I spent so much time on body camera discussion, I said we'd save it. Um, one of our officers and the chief and I have talked about, uh, possibly introducing something called a virtual, um, neighborhood watch opportunity in this community, modeling it after something they do down at Burlington right now, and, uh, it wouldn't be anything that would require a particular expenditure. Uh, it's more of trying to get people organized to help with us in situations, maybe where we're trying to find out, uh, a string as far as causation, maybe we're trying to find out something as far as, uh, um, invisible movement late at night. Um, and many, many homes in our community, as in Burlington, have things like motion sensing cameras. I was just talking to somebody about their, sort of their trail around their backyard the other night, they have motion sensing cameras in two places to see deer, but they also get to see who walks through their back trail in the evening, uh, and that's the kinda thing that's helpful to law enforcement, if we do have that extra ingredient as far as a set of eyes that nobody else has turned on at the time that it happens. Uh, motion sensing, uh, cameras, uh, security system cameras, many, many houses have some kinda security cameras on them, and now, uh, one of the later, uh, uh, creations is doorbell cameras, and we get a good, pretty good, uh, exposures to those, just with, uh, little snippets on YouTube. If you take a chance on, uh, doorbell cameras, you can watch about probably an hour of, about one minute at a time, things that happen through somebody's doorbell camera. But the whole idea of those kinds of, uh, video, um, watching devices, uh, is that there's really no additional investment inquired if you get people that are willing to share it. And, uh, what Burlington has done is they have a system, uh, uh, which, you know, if, if you're interested, I'll give you the, um, um, online, uh, connection information, but their system, uh, essentially involves having a person sign up, uh, just to indicate, uh, to the, uh, law enforcement in the county and the city that they do have, um, these viewing devices, uh, and, uh, that they're willing to share them if there's something that comes up in their neighborhood. Um, I think this would be a particularly helpful thing. In certain situations, uh, we, at times, we've had, uh, what I would call rashes of, uh, neighborhood burglaries, people getting into cars, people going through backyards and getting after garages and things like that. Um, uh, this is a, uh, um, sometime occurrence, but it's something that, um, it can't hurt to have that, and I think probably the community, um, would sign up, I guess. So, what I'd like to do is just ask the council, maybe we'd have Public Safety Committee look at this with, uh, it's, um, Officer Nielsen and Chief Thomas and myself, and if we can put together something like Burlington has, or if you're interested in what Burlington has, uh, at www.burlingtoniowa.org, virtual neighborhood watch program, um, that's what you look for, uh, and, um, you'll find that they have a pretty nice system, which we could simply plagiarize, uh, and, uh, put it into effect in our community. So, um, that's all I have to report tonight. If the council would consider having Public Safety Committee talk with us about that, I think probably we get, um, together and have an informal conversation about it with our law enforcement people that are aware of this.
Is there a motion to move that to public safety?
So moved.
Moved by Kness?
Second.
Second by Gandy, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same side? Okay, that's unanimous, that moved that to public safety. John, is that, is there any kinda ordinance that goes with that, or it's just?
I don't think they need one.
That's what's, I wondered if there was any kind of formal-
Right, I, from what I gathered from a reading Burlington's, uh, setup, it's mostly tied to some things in evidentiary rules-
Mm-hmm.
-as far as the fact that, uh, it's really not the law enforcement doing it, it would be situations where people caught it on their own cameras in their own yards, and then they offered it, and it becomes a piece of evidence, uh, and, uh, the way theirs is set up, it just sort of matches what's in the rules of evidence, as far as how you then can submit that as an exhibit and use them as a witness, and they basically indicate that they're willing to do that.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Uh, anything else?
No, that's all.
Uh, committee and board reports, public safety and transportation?
Yes. Uh, we met this afternoon at noon to discuss, uh, the complaint that was brought up, uh, at our last, uh, city council meeting through a public forum by Steve Boggs, that down at, um, down at, at, uh, South Second and South Third Crossing Harrison, the, uh, there is a fence at eight eleven South Second that, uh, runs parallel with the street, but it's actually into the easement of access area that, uh, it should be left open to the city, and it is prohibiting sightlines in those, um, other, uh, parts of the intersection of allowing, uh, safer turns and things. I was driving there Friday, the street of Harrison itself is fairly narrow, so two-way traffic was fine midday on Friday, where there wasn't a lot, but on Saturday, when I was traveling it with all the extra, um, traffic in town because of the events going on from farmer's market to, uh, the things around the square with the power, um, trucks, there was a lot more traffic on that street, and it was quite difficult. Also, people are home on the weekends from their businesses, so there were, uh, vehicles parked parallel, which left one lane of traffic for movement, and those intersections were especially, um, because you can't see around the fence. What the committee, uh, recommendation is that we would, um, go ahead and send, uh, a notice to- blacked out on me, sorry. Send a notice to the homeowner. Trying to open my computer. Um, and ask, let them know that it's not compliant because of where the fence is sitting, and ask them to remove that outside fence from where it is, so that the sightlines can be restored, and then, uh, give a thirty-day notice. We do understand that hiring a contractor in midsummer is difficult, but the note, the thirty-day notice is to get that process moving, we wanted this done as soon as possible, we would like to see the project finished before school begins, um, mid-August. And so, uh, we would like for the, the homeowner to give City Hall an idea of what the contractors would be saying about how soon they could help, if, if they're not going to do it privately. But that's the, the process that we want to begin, so that we can assist the community of having a better sight around, um, that corner lot where the fence is.
So, you're talking about just taking down the jut out and taking down that tree? Is that correct, or the whole?
So far, we, we didn't discuss the tree because we need to see, they have taken branches off of the tree to improve sightlines, um, and so, what we're asking to start with is the, the fence itself.
And just that smaller section?
The whole fence.
The whole thing, because you can't, even if they, if they would just take off the one side, there's fencing in the, at the front part, and so, the sightline around the corner is just not possible from either, um, the north direction, or, um, moving and needing to make turns around the corner at the right-hand side.
But the tree is on private property, it's not the right-of-way.
The tree, it could be-
The tree is on, is on right-of-way.
Part of it.
It, it could be right on because of the size it has grown to, yeah.
Right.
Right. The tree is, if the tree is thin enough, and they keep trimming the lower branches, though, it shouldn't block line of sight. But we don't really know exactly how thick the tree is at the base until they take down that fence, so...
Right. And it might be more noticeable, too, of how the tree would then block the view as well. What we're trying to do is bring up as much visibility as possible because when traffic is moving quicker or fuller on Harrison, which is narrow, then that is the concern. So all the way around. We just want to improve those sightlines for everybody, make it safer.
So do you want to make a motion that, for the city to write that letter?
Yes, to proceed with this, that is the motion, yes.
Okay. Is there a second to Judy's motion to proceed with the removal of the fence, asking the owners? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Ham?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, there's one more thing. We just want to point out that we noticed in the general discussion that we were having that conversation of the narrowness of Harrison, and just wanted to draw attention to that, that in the future, we might want to have a discussion about that street in particular and look at it more closely because of the heavier use that it's getting.
Is parking allowed on both sides?
Just on the one side. But when that parking is there, it really does prohibit...
And especially towards Main Street, it seems like maybe some of the people that live in that area are contractors or in some nature where they have trailers. And so, it's not just a car or a truck. It's a truck with a trailer about 100% of the time.
Right.
So when Fillmore was closed and all, like, it was very congested on Harrison.
And it is a route now that people wanting to go west will take off of one, Highway One, south to come into the city. So, you know, just keeping that in mind, that's some, or another reason we might need to be looking at it.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Administrator and department reports?
Well, I can just, I've got two properties that I need to discuss quickly. I can answer any questions you may, but 701 South Fourth and 700 West Hempstead are right now on the, will take council action for us to get onto this, onto these properties. This particular house, this is 701 South Fourth Street. We have been asked to board up this abandoned house, and the only crews that do that would be the street department. They are currently, right now, are working on a street project over off of Park Street. But if you look at these pictures, you can actually see broken windows. And if you've, there's actually a book written about that, where as they break a window, then the next thing, there's entrance, and the next thing, that there's destruction and all sorts of different things. So this particular piece of property needs to be boarded up, but our ICAP insurance actually has said we need council approval in order for that, for us to do that action.
And I think the situation with that house is, some, the owner passed away, correct? And then, I think heirs don't want to take responsibility for it or such, something, something like that?
That's what's going on. Neither does the lender.
And, yeah, they're still paying the property taxes, and so it's not going to tax sale.
Do we know who owns the building?
Yes. Yeah. We, I'm actually paused on doing a 657A against it, but the boarding it up is an initial solution to squatters that have been in and out of it for the last year or two.
So doors and all the windows on the first floor is what we're talking about?
Yeah.
The owner is Rochelle Waters, since 2008.
And it's been a problem for several years. And if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, tell them who you are and your neighbor, I know.
My house is 609 South Fourth. That is my, the view out of the side of my house. And it needs more than just being boarded up. It needs to be taken down or fixed up. And, yeah, kids have been going in and out of it. She passed four years ago. She had not paid taxes, property tax for a year, but she was in there. And now, four years since, there's no property tax been paid on it.
That's not true, actually. The property taxes are paid by her mortgage company.
Oh, well...
Otherwise, it would have been on the tax rules.
Correct, it would have been sold a tax sale otherwise.
I wish it had.
Right, it'd be better if it was sold a tax sale.
That's amazing. Okay. So, yeah, kids go in and out in the backyard. This, it actually looks better now, believe it or not, than it has because the grass is covering stuff. And things have disappeared, you know? If there's something valuable out there, it gets disappeared. But for whatever reason, kids go in there and drag stuff out and dump it in the backyard. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's going to be a process. This is a first step of the process, I think, of getting it boarded up, so it's not a hazard.
So does our insurance company pay for this? You mentioned the insurance company wants us to give approval. They're not involved in making payments or anything.
It would be concerning.
That's just a liability call.
Yeah. If one of our, if one of our employees were to get hurt and need workman's comp, we just want council approval.
John, you said that there was a pause on the 657A?
Right, I've got one drafted. What we intend to do, first, we have to make sure that we don't have squatters or someone that has some kind of claim to occupancy. And the boarding up accomplishes that, plus we've already got a sign posted on it saying you're not supposed to be there. But that will be followed by a district court filing under 657A to have the city take the title to it, assuming that some of the other people that right now have the interest in the title relinquish it. I think the mortgage company, they've had their head in the sand for the last three years. I don't think they have an interest in trying to redeem the property. I don't think they have an interest in trying to have a fight with us about having the property taken as a nuisance. The estate doesn't appear to intend to do anything about it. And, you know, that's your dilemma, is who's going to do anything about it? Well, we're going to step in because it qualifies now as an abandoned property, and it qualifies as a property where the people that should be doing something about it are basically not going to. And they can sign something called a relinquishment of interest once papers are served on them, or they can essentially, they can come to court with us and drag it out, but I don't see any purpose in that. And I don't think they have a purpose in it.
The only ones, right?
Right. I think the mortgage company doesn't feel that it's going to do very well if it tries to be in charge. And that's, that's an opinion I have courtesy of Weston McKee, but Weston's been in communication with him. He feels they'll relinquish this. He's our code enforcement officer and has talked about how this could work. Other than that, the estate itself, Weston has also talked with them, and they have no plans to do something themselves. But there is an estate open, so...
Well, he's done more than I knew he had done.
So, moving forward with the 657As, the next step is just filing paperwork with...
Right. You basically, in the 657A, we will indicate that there aren't any claims of occupancy and that the place is boarded up. Basically, that will be a little bit of an addition to what we're there right now. But it happens in district court. There's formalities and rules that we follow there. If there's a relinquishment, this could go fairly quickly. And that's what we'll be asking for after everybody's had their chance to respond during the first 30 days after they get paperwork.
Excellent.
So I make the motion to allow city personnel to board up this property to make it safe?
I second that.
Okay. Been moved by Flornoy, second by Rowe to board up this property by our street crew. Any other questions?
Has Weston been in it, do you know, John?
He has been in it.
He has? Okay.
It's totally open. Anybody can go into it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Now please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Can I add a little?
Yes.
If, back when you showed that in a minute, show that we did it pursuant to Chapter 17, yeah, unsafe building.
Okay, thank you. The next property is 700 West Hempstead.
This property was ordered by the judge for the city to abate this property, clean it up. We were in court last week, and the property owners said that they would like to get a few items out, but it's been like this for years. I don't even believe that this actually has water hooked to it or electricity. And a lot of those buckets that you see, from my understanding, I don't know whether it's true or not, is that that's actually food storage. But we will give the property owners to find a few of these things, but the judge has asked the city to go in. I did, I actually had to ask the staff what our city cleanup crew was. It's the street department. So, a couple of things that are occurring is, is yes, we are working very hard at getting these properties in compliance and being good neighbors, but there's two things that are happening. Is one, it's overwhelming our street department crews because they have to pull off of street work in order to clean up a property, maybe haul off vehicles. But also Weston, our code enforcement officer, he is so, he has 55-plus houses out of compliance that he has to work on. And not to mention, you know, just cleaning up junk and overgrowth, what have you. I am trying to assist him in kind of guiding him, but I need him to focus on yard cleanups. And we've got a lot of houses, but I've asked Weston to try to get the property owners of these dilapidated houses to abate them themselves instead of putting that responsibility on the city. But also, we're mowing people's grasses, and we're billing them, and we're charging them, and we're chasing a lot of rabbits here. And so, if there's anything that we need Weston to do, there's a lot of council members that communicate with all of my staff, and I would want you to. But if I could stay in the lift to help him take some of this burden off, because he's going like a madman.
Just as a thought, too, and I'm sure this has nothing to do with it, but they become more unsightly as the grass grows and everything grows. So if we could not inundate the streets department in the summertime when they actually can work on the streets, and this is something that we take care of when we're not plowing snow, that seems like it would be a better time for our resources to be allocated elsewhere.
Hundred percent.
Good point. And again, I want to reiterate, you know, as you're out and about, if you see a property that needs some attention, you know, push that over to Doug, and he'll delegate it as needed. Now, are these people not living here now?
They live there.
They live there.
They do live there.
They live there.
They do live there.
This is one where I talked to you several months ago about a problem we have about, we have a policy similar to the policies you adopted tonight, but it's out the front rack of policies of the city about relocating people that we dislocate. And our policies on that are, we do what we can. These folks, both Scott, the former fire chief, and Weston and I have searched places to try to come up with something for relocation because one of these folks is very disabled, the other one is a different kind of disability. But we've tried to introduce them to things as far as the six available units and three of the multifamily housings that qualify for subsidies around town. And they just aren't having any part of it. So you can, you can try to help somebody if they don't want to be helped. We're still going to have to follow our policies as best we can as far as relocating a dislocated person at our result. And this is one where that house isn't worth putting anybody back into, and we won't come out if we salvage anything out of it. It would be a vacant lot cleaned off. And I know there's been discussion in the past with both of our enforcement officers about maybe the best solution down there is a skid loader, because the house is basically infested. The living conditions are such that Board of Health doesn't have a solution for it, and we don't.
Do they have a caseworker? A state caseworker?
They do have a state...
A guardian?
They do have a state caseworker, and I've talked to the assistant county attorney about a state-imposed protective guardianship with a state-appointed guardian for them. This is not top priority for the county attorney's office, and I don't blame them, but it is something where these folks, essentially, at some point, somebody's going to have to make them do something about their own living. And that sounds pretty heavy-handed, but it's one of those situations where it's pretty hard to get somebody to help themselves if they don't want to be helped.
Do you know how long it's been without water and electricity?
My belief is probably at least the last couple of years.
I was going to say four, five. It's been since Scott Vaughn, I mean, he red-tagged it. Eight years ago. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it does seem to me like somebody should take over, they need a state-appointed guardian.
So our insurance company also approved this?
So...
Yes, that's why I'm bringing it to the council.
I make the motion that we...
Because in this particular property, the street department cannot go in there in mode because there's too much metal and debris everywhere.
Yeah.
They have to go in there by hand or with a skid loader to take...
Doug, we don't need a motion. They're already in court, and we probably have a sympathetic court as far as making them do something, but it's just, it's not going to accomplish what we want.
Did the court order the city to do the abatement?
The city said if they don't get something done, that it will allow the city to do it.
So we have authority to do it, but we're not required to do it?
Right. Right, we're not required to do it, but all of these nuisance situations are something that we're involved in because first, we try to get them to abate themselves. It's always giving the individual the opportunity first, and then the court will, under our infraction rules, it will give us the authority to fix it if they don't.
They're able-bodied, and they could do the abatement themselves.
Right. This situation, the wife is able-bodied, the husband is disabled, neither one of them has done anything over there in years. They exist. And there isn't much else that I can say except to kind of stay that way until we take another step.
It looks like they've owned the house since 1969. It's been a long time.
Yeah, there was a time about 15 or 20 years ago when the husband was in better shape, I used to buy fish bait from him. And he was a nice guy, but right now, he just, pretty much, he's lost it all. And that's a sad thing to see when your health is...
And there's no extended family around?
No. No. And you're right about, the caseworkers are aware of this, but it, it's going to take probably something from one of the two of them that are defendants to decide to ask us to go farther than we can go without that.
Are we able to approach the caseworker? They're, they're not involved in the court proceedings that we have?
Well, that's the reason I talked to the assistant county attorney is because I felt that happens to be Liz about trying to go that route, and that was going to get talked over with Chauncey, the county attorney, and try to figure more out on that side. They would ordinarily be representing DHS. And it's been a long time since I was county attorney, but we did do some court-mandated guardianships and had the department designate a guardian at state expense when that happened. And I know we had situations similar to these folks. That's what's going on there. That's what's going on there.
Yeah, okay. So, is that good enough for you? You want anything else? Nope, okay.
Can I ask Doug one question really quick?
Yeah.
You have on your summary about work has begun on removing from the brush pile site, we have the inner approval. Yes, what is happening with it, or where is it going, or what are we doing?
It is just going over the hill, and it's, we have a site there that it has been burnt, gonzo.
I was going to say, I saw some smoke.
Wasps, and gonzo.
And I was out there the other day, and it was much cleaner than it was last time I'd been out there. So I was just curious as to what had happened and where it was going, so. Thank you. Thanks.
Great. If nothing else, Melanie, do you have anything?
No.
All righty, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Toohill.
Second.
Second by Ham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, meeting adjourned.